Have our pledge and prayer and communion lead us to be very good.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
My father, David, or as we gather, tonight, or as council members, and mayor, staff, or assistance of BB board, as we reflect back upon your goodness and grace, and Lord, how you brought us through obstacles and challenges, and we're grateful for that. And, Lord, as we close upon this year, Lord, we look back and see, Lord, how you have blessed us, and we look forward to the future, and we pray that you'd give us insight, the vision, the wisdom, Lord, to make good decisions for the city and the people that live here, Lord, that ultimately glorifies you, and we praise you for that in Jesus' name.
Amen. Okay, Carol's not going to be with us tonight, so Harley's going to be doing the minutes and the records. Also, North Star was, thank you very much. She's here. You want to say a few words, or?
We appreciate the opportunity to keep serving the D-Day and the other merry inside persons.
You too.
We appreciate y'all very, very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our agenda will probably be pretty quick tonight. We don't put too much on it for the end of the year, so we'll cover anything that you want to cover. So, we'll just start with item number one and go through. Harley, if you want to take care of that.
Okay, I'm going to call the roll first. Alderman Duggar?
Here.
Alderman Stark?
Here.
Alderman Lindsey?
Here.
Alderman McCormick is absent. Alderman Lightfoot?
Here.
Alderman McLean?
Here.
We on?
Yeah.
Okay. Can you let us know if you can hear us?
Okay. First in your packet, you should have the Water Department financials for November 2024.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Approve.
Okay, so I have a motion by Alderman Duggar, and a second by Alderman Lightfoot. All in favor?
Aha.
Any opposed? So, the next thing is the minutes for the November 12 BB planning and zoning meeting. Is there a motion to?
Motion to accept.
Second.
All in favor?
Aha.
Any opposed? Okay, so next we have ordinance 2024-23, a dedication of streets of Bellingrath Phase II.
Motion to read by title only.
Second.
On this ordinance, there's going to be two attachments that's with it. Certificate of public dedications is attached to it, and also acceptance of the city, by the city, will be attached to this ordinance.
Okay, so I'm going to call the roll for this one. Alderman Duggar?
We got to read the title first.
Oh, I'm sorry. Ordinance number 2024-23, an ordinance accepting dedication of all streets and public utilities to the Bellingrath Phase II addition within the city limits of BB Arkansas, declaring an emergency and for other purposes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Alderman Duggar?
Yes.
Alderman Stark?
Yes.
Alderman Lindsey?
Yes.
Alderman McCormick is absent. Alderman Lightfoot?
Yes.
Alderman McLean?
Yes.
Okay, I need a motion to dispense with the second and third readings in accordance with the municipal code.
Motion. Second.
Alderman Duggar?
Yes.
Alderman Stark?
Yes.
Alderman Lindsey?
Yes.
Alderman Lightfoot?
Yes.
Alderman McLean?
Yes.
And I need a motion to adopt the emergency clause to the ordinance.
Where is it? I'm not seeing it.
It's number four.
Yes, okay, I'm sorry.
Is there a second?
Second.
Alderman Duggar?
Yes.
Alderman Stark?
Yes.
Alderman Lindsey?
Yes.
Alderman Lightfoot?
Yes.
Alderman McLean?
Yes.
I have a question on the blank on this. It says approved by the BB Planning Commission on, what date was that?
12. 12/3.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, part of the Bellingrath Phase II Declaration of Covenant, Conditions and Restrictions, that's kind of new for us, so we need to accept the Bellingrath Phase II Declaration.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll first.
Yes, yes, please.
Okay, Alderman Duggar?
Yes.
Alderman Stark?
Yes.
Alderman Lindsey?
Yes.
Alderman Lightfoot?
Yes.
Alderman McLean?
Yes.
Okay, next we have the City Clerk Treasurer's financials for November 2024, including the treasurer report, balance sheets for general and street fund, statement of revenue and expenditures for general fund and street fund, payment journals for each banking account, and deposit journal for each banking account. Is there a motion to approve them as presented?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aha.
Any opposed? And then we have resolution 2024-06, the 2025 budget. Is there a motion to waive the reading and read by title only?
Yeah, a motion to read by title.
Second.
Resolution number 2024-06, a resolution to adopt the budget for year 2025, appropriating money for each and every item of expenditure provided for declaring an emergency to exist and for other purposes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Alderman Duggar?
Yes.
Alderman Stark?
Yes.
Alderman Lindsey?
Yes.
Alderman McCormick is absent. Alderman Lightfoot?
Yes.
Alderman McLean?
Yes.
Is there a motion to dispense with the second and third readings?
So moved.
Second.
Alderman Duggar?
Yes.
Alderman Stark?
Yes.
Alderman Lindsey?
Yes.
Alderman Lightfoot?
Yes.
Alderman McLean?
Yes.
Is there a motion to adopt the emergency clause to the ordinance?
Yes.
Second.
Alderman Duggar?
Yes.
Alderman Stark?
Yes.
Alderman Lindsey?
Yes.
Alderman McCormick, or Alderman Lightfoot?
Yes.
Alderman McLean?
Yes.
Okay, and then we have, and the Police Department has got a new grant.
The Police Department received a grant for $74,402.01. We are planning to buy two in-car cameras, which would outfit all of our police cars, would then have cameras, including the CID cars, tasers for the patrol officers, new tasers for patrol officers, and then the equipment for us to go from analog to digital with the radio. So, it shouldn't cost the city anything for that transfer, except for maybe some incidentals programming, or whatever that may be. And I'd also like to say thank you to Brian Duke, Chief Duke, for everything that he does every day, not just this, but what he does at the department. For me, it definitely makes my job a lot easier than it otherwise would be, so. But he also did this, so.
Brian, thank you.
Appreciate it, Brian.
Okay, the last item that I have would be, it's ordinance 2024, an ordinance admitting the city of BB land development subdivision code. This has been requested by the planning zoning, and Randy has drafted this, and so Randy, I'll let you kind of go through it, if you will, and explain what we have done.
The mayor came to me with a question, concern, brought to him by the Planning Commission, and effectively asked if we could include in our BB land development and subdivision code a requirement that bill of assurances be provided with and filed with the final plats, and in addition to it, in connection with common areas that may be deeded to a property owners' association, if that's provided for in the bill of assurance, they wanted to make sure that that was done as a requirement. We don't have those, you know, the requirement in there, because if the land, if there was going to be some kind of common area, you need to make sure that you've got, you know, some entity that is going to be able to, A, own the common area, B, keep up the common area. And so, this is a combination of, you know, several ordinances in several different towns setups that I looked at and reviewed, discussed with the mayor, sent in and had him look at, and this is what we came up. Effectively, it's going to amend the final plat section, Article 5, Procedure, Section 3, Final Plat, to effectively just say that in addition, when you submit your final plat and all the requirements that you've got for submitting the final plat, it does, it amends that to include that you're going to include the document specified in Sections 2, which it already said, and it adds Sections 3, because we're adding a Section 3 that describes the bill of assurances. And then it's going to amend Section 3.4, but in reality, all that amendment is, is to add in addition to where it says final plat, it will also say and bill of assurance. So, the requirements for filing those would be the same. Article, Section 2, Final Plat, that's where you kind of, there's really a little bit more of the amendments. It adds a Section 18 requirement that the bill of assurance approved by the Planning Commission be, is a requirement. And then it added a Section 3 that discusses the bill of assurance requirements. And effectively, other than, in this case, it was asked if it be, instead of submitting it with the final plat, they wanted it submitted earlier than that to be able to be looked at, so we did some language there. And in general, we typically get those anyway, bills of assurance that have most of this information, and it doesn't, it doesn't specifically require, say, everything that's going to be in there. It kind of says, here's the general things that you're going to, what you're going to have in the bill of assurance. And so, but then after that, the next part of that is the part that really, you know, adds that, if you're going to have in your bill of assurance that you're going to have a property owners' association, or if you're going to have common owned areas that are going to be owned by or deeded to there, then you're going to have to be sure that you set up that legal entity, that, you know, you make participation in the homeowners' association, or what other entity is set up, mandatory, that, you know, you put in any open space restrictions through deed restrictions, and that the homeowners' association is responsible for the maintenance of these common owned facilities or areas as defined. And it is not just areas, it is facilities. There can be other stuff lighting that may be private. But, and then it requires them to, you know, set something up where they pay it and they can adjust it, so they can keep it up and it doesn't fall, effectively fall back on the city. Because in reality, if it's not set up, if it's a provision for it to be in there, and there's something not set up in there, and no property owners' association is ever set up, they don't collect fees, they don't do what a property owners' association is supposed to do, in the event you do have these common owned facilities out there, you know who they're going to be looking at to upkeep them after the fact. So, that's what I was tasked with, this is what that is. And again, it was, it was, you know, after looking at several different cities and how they've done it.
Well, we brought, we've talked about this common area and responsibilities back and forth for quite some time, and planning zoning has talked about it. As we continue to grow, regulations are going to continue to change. This is basically what we just did tonight, I believe, with acceptance of, like, a bill of assurance, because as you know, the developer may not be the person that's presenting the bill of assurance, it may be the builder. And so, we're trying to cover everything now that the city, you know, we have the common areas that someone is taking care of. And so, if you want to study this more, if you want to look at it, we do not have to adopt it tonight. We can look at it for, you can take it and you can look at it, or we can adopt it. But this is what it basically is saying, is just changing our land subdivision development code to require that there's a bill of assurance, and require that the common areas are addressed within it. And that's exactly what happened tonight in the one that we just adopted a few minutes ago. We, the developer, we accepted the dedications of streets and so on, and then the builder is presenting a bill of assurance there that addresses either a homeowners' association or addresses the common areas. So, but, again, you can table it, or you can adopt it, if you want to study it, that's fine.
That's ordinance number one.
2024-23.
You think it, have you looked at it close enough to think it's going to work, or you want to make amendments or suggestions?
Yeah, and understand, it's not, I mean, this isn't the end-all, be-all. If there's some revisions that you feel need to be addressed, something you don't feel like that's been addressed, we can always look at that, you know, and add and subtract. This is just, based upon the information I was given, what appeared to be the general idea of what I was tasked with, and if there's something missing, something we feel like we're not, you know, didn't address enough, overaddressed, whatever we need to do, we can, we can.
What about enforcement? So, let's say that the BOA doesn't do what they say they're going to do in black and white, and there's funds collected.
Yeah, no, I, and we had that conversation. I could not, could not find a good enforcement mechanism of a bill of assurance, because the bill of assurance is ultimately a contract between the property owners that own that property there at that time. And so, the enforcement of that is really left tasked to the property owners' association, if there is one, and that's why we're trying to make sure there is one, but you know as well as I do, the property owners' associations may not always enforce everything at times, or an individual homeowner can, a landowner in there can seek to enforce that away. I'm not, and again, I looked at it, I talked to the mayor about it, and I'm not sure there's a good mechanism for city, just for the city to come in and say, we're going to enforce it, unless it is somehow a violation of some other, you know.
If there are sections of a bill of assurance that is questionable, as the, you know, you're worried about it being enforceable, then we can take that and incorporate it into our land subdivision development code or our zoning code to give us the authority to enforce. So, this was kind of step one, and then if there's something that's in there that says, okay, well, we're worried about enforcement of something, then we can address that through our zoning code. Is that right, you think?
That's how we would have to do it.
Pardon?
That's how we would have to do it. But there's nothing out there on its own that gives us the right to enforce these contracts unless we.
Well, right, right. Like I'm saying, it's like we have in place right now a plan in this ordinance for grasses. If it gets over 10 inches, then we can enforce it to be mowed, and we can enforce not parking in the streets, and we can enforce not parking in the yards, and we can enforce several things that we could, if something is a concern, that we could add to our enforcement, but through our zoning code.
It's going to have to go that route.
Pardon?
It's going to have to go that route, through, we're going to add something to our zoning ordinances that would give us a little bit of.
That would be the route we'd have to go?
We had, like I said, we have, you have in place the regular thing, I mean, you know, because typically, and what, and this is part of, like, for example, the part of this about saying the bill of assurance needs to be 30 days before, I mean, 90 days before final approvals, because you will look at it and go, well, this bill of assurance says that in that subdivision, the grass can be so high, and that's not, it's slower, so why don't, you know, let's get that changed, so you're in line with, you know, what we have, that kind of concept with that. But, you know, we'll have to come up with some kind of city enforcement, because again, we've.
You don't even have it if you can't enforce it.
What you're.
Well, the enforcement of it, again, is by, the property owners' association is supposed to do it. That's what we're trying to do, is get them set up, and trying to get that started with, where the subdivisions will do that, and they will have people who will enforce it. And then, and that's the requirement why the ordinance come, is being set up to say, and you're going to have to have your property owners' association, and if you're going to have common areas that are going to be, that deeded to, not something that the cities, you know, not an easement that the city's got on the street, but some area, for example, you put a little park, whatever reason, whatever. Oh, that park looks good the first year out there, and then nobody upkeeps it. So, the property owners' association is going to have to do it, and they're going to be, it says right here, you got it, you got to do it, you got to make them pay, and now, that part of it can be enforced. I mean, we can, you know, that's our ordinance that says you've got to have that, and you've got to be doing that. Now, whether we can come in and into, you know, as a city, if it's not a violation of our zoning ordinance in place, I don't know that we could just go in and be the one that says, well, you're, you're not taking care of this, you know, but we can, we can try our best through our zoning ordinances and try to get some more language in there that'll give us a little bit more power.
So, do we amend this ordinance, or do we just, in your opinion, make other ordinances?
Well, I think, I think this, this is in the, I think by amending what we've done here, you get it started and placed. I'm not sure where we would, in the zoning ordinance, whether it need to be in here, this particular part of our, you know, of the subdivision code, or whether it'd be somewhere else in our zoning ordinance is where we would put that provision. We'll look, we can look into that more.
Yeah, let's do that.
Okay.
But I'm happy with this, as long as, my only concern is.
What is your major concern?
Enforcement.
It's, it's, you know, it's going to be, enforcement is going to be as good as those people that purchased their homes and how they want to look into the future of how they want it to look, you know, and most of it, and like, if they do an HOA, homeowners' association, and those people would do the enforcement of it, you know, there's going to be a board, and they would do the enforcement of it. It's only going to be as good as the people that's representing the entire subdivision, or those people that want to step up to enforce it. And then, if there are concerns somewhere along the way, that if it's, what's parked in the front yard, or what's in the front yard, we can address that some by our zoning code, but.
Perfect.
And ideally, that, you know, in the bill of assurance, for most part, they're supposed, you know, they'll be going beyond, you know, beyond what the city says. So, for example, you're going to have to have architectural shingles on the house versus red or whatever.
Bellingrath, when it's 70 pages, and it's very detailed, which is, again, how much are they going to actually enforce in it?
And we'll definitely look into, you know, we, my initial look through was not giving me what I was wanting, so I'm going to have to look a little bit more on where we would, you know, find the enforcement beyond what we already have, what would be a violation of our zoning ordinance in itself.
I think we need to go ahead and get this one on the books. So, I'm going to make a motion when we read ordinance 2024, what?
24.
24, by title only.
Second.
Alderman Duggar?
You got to read it first.
Oh, I'm sorry, y'all. Ordinance number 2024-24, an ordinance admitting the city of BB land development and subdivision code to include the submission, approval, and filing of a bill of assurance prior to or in connection with the approval and filing of the final plat, declaring an emergency and for other purposes. Alderman Duggar?
Motion to adopt, that's ready.
Alderman Stark?
Yes.
Alderman Lindsey?
Yes.
Alderman McCormick is absent. Alderman Lightfoot?
Yes.
Alderman McLean?
Yes.
Is there a motion to dispense with the second and third readings?
So moved.
Who was that? Alderman Duggar? Alderman Dugger?
Yes.
Alderman Stark?
Yes.
Alderman Lindsey?
Yes.
Alderman Lightfoot?
Yes.
Alderman McLean?
Yes.
Is there a motion to adopt the emergency clause?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Alderman Dugger?
Yes.
Alderman Stark?
Yes.
Alderman Lindsey?
Yes.
Alderman Lightfoot?
Yes.
Alderman McLean?
Yes.
So before we move on, I made a motion to adopt it as you read it. So we got to have a second for that. I just don't want, I want everything to be right. You got to, we got to have a motion to read it, and then once you read it, we got to have a motion to accept that reading.
Okay.
Okay.
So I made that motion, so...
Okay.
I'm right in saying that, right, Mayor?
I thought I did that.
Is that right?
Uh, normally, there's a motion to read it and a motion to adopt it.
Motion to accept that reading, yeah.
Yes.
I was making the motion after you read it to accept it. But you just started calling names, so I just wanted you to grab a second.
Yeah, we got it.
Okay, so what's my motion right now?
I think we're good right now.
Good, okay.
Quick question, Mike. Says the final plat in BOA shall be filed at the clerk within six months of P&amp;Z's approval. So that gives P&amp;Z six months to take it to the courthouse?
No.
And that's what was already in there, that six months, that was already in there. It just didn't have with the bill of assurance. I think that the concept behind this is, is, or that, my reading and understanding of that was, is that if the final plat is approved, and then they give up, I mean, just, you know, they've gone through that process, and for whatever reason, then they don't want to go forward and just don't get it filed in six months, and it just dies, it's done. That's the concept.
It's between the city and the developer to make sure it's filed within that six months. It's not that they have six months there to drag.
Yeah.
Once it's, once the final plat is approved, it must be filed in six months. Or it's invalid.
It's not kind of meant to be, well, well, once you get the final approval, you can wait around six months to file it before you do anything. You got to file it, do it. But if you, if that developer, for whatever reason, starts having financial problems and whatever happens, and they decide they just can't do it, if by six months, if it hasn't been filed, it's over and done.
I think at one time, the developer took it filed, maybe before that started up yet.
Okay.
If it wasn't filed within six months, and now we're taking it and filing it, so...
Okay.
You know, and we had some that the developer, they didn't ever file them.
Oh, okay.
And so then they caught us up and later on that, hey, this is a city, but it's, well, it's really not, but it never was filed.
And I would assume the thought process behind this is kind of like, if that, again, if that developer all of a sudden has gone through this process, gets it there, and then hits a financial wall, and he says, can y'all hold off on filing it for, you know, and we're going, that's fine, but you've got a maximum of six months. And then if you have it, if it's not filed, and you're not working on it, you've lost it.
Apple Boston, for instance, you know, they went out there and they got all done and everything, it never was filed. They never went and filed that, never became part of the city. They never finished or dedicated anything to the city. They never finished the roads, but, so that's what happened with that one. And so it's still not a city street. It wasn't a county road when it came in the city, but...
Okay.
We do the best we can to upgrade it. Anybody have anything else? I'll tell you this one, yes.
So on ordinance 24-23, is tonight's date the date that we certified the developer? Is that tonight?
Yes.
Okay, I was just confused by that. Thank you.
I say I appreciate the city council, I appreciate everything you do and the time that you give. And I know people don't tell you enough, and it's a lot of work and a lot of responsibility. You're in charge of the finances, you're in charge of the real property, you're in charge of legislative duties, and I appreciate you, and you know, people don't say it enough.
We appreciate you, Mayor.
Motion, second.
Have a good one.